So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the May 16th, 2023, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Charles Harrell if he would come forward and give us an invocation. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. May we be in prayer together? Good morning, dear Lord. It's a beautiful day that you've given to us, and we are grateful, grateful for your love, grateful for your sustaining, grateful for bringing us all here today, that we got up this morning, drew breath, and were able to take in the sunshine, the smile of those around us, and to be gathered in this place today through the business of the people of our county. We thank you most especially, dear Lord, for our first responders, for our EMS personnel. We thank you for their training, their skill, their dedication and devotion above all, for the way they put themselves out for this community, for each of us, day by day. We thank you as well for their families, who at times, both convenient and inconvenient, sacrifice so much so that they too, so that their loved ones can be with us and can care for us in our time of need. We ask your special blessing on this day of recognition for them. We also remember during this month of May, our nurses and other medical help support. We pray, even though the holiday is two days past, we give you thanks continually for our mothers and the work that they do and the way that they bring extra richness to our lives. Lord, now, as we are gathered for the purpose of this day, we ask your guidance and blessing on the Commissioners and those who work to support their work. We ask that you would give them wisdom as we move through the business of the day. And as we look at the budget this evening, we pray, Lord, in the midst of, there are always so many needs and so many wants that far surpass the needs, and, Lord, there are so many claims. We pray for wisdom and guidance as that important work is also accomplished. And now, with confidence and trust in you, we go into this time together, grateful, as we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Reverend Harrell. We appreciate you coming and joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
I have none.
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the agenda?
Second?
Have a motion and a second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, a couple of public service announcements. Tonight at 7:00, right here in the Commissioners' hearing room, we'll be holding our Commissioners' budget hearing, give our citizens an opportunity to come out and comment on the budget as presented. If you don't want to come in person, you can call in or Zoom in, and if you go to the county website, you can get that information on how you can do that. Otherwise, you can attend in person right here, and we will start at 7:00 PM. Also, this Saturday, excuse me, May 20th, it's Armed Forces Day. We certainly want to take this opportunity to thank all of our Armed Forces for what they do for us to protect our safety every single day. And it's also EMS Week, and a little later in the agenda, we're going to be presenting a proclamation to the EMS services here in Calver County. We're so blessed to have a wonderful volunteer and paid service here in Calver County that takes care of our citizens and whenever they have needs, and we just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank them for the service that they provide. So, that brings us to the proclamation. Commissioner Harland.
So, Heather Howes, will you please come up and start for us? Looks like we have several people here today. You can form a line behind her once you introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to start by saying that EMS is out there responding, but it doesn't just start with those on the road. It actually starts when the 911 call comes into our dispatchers. So, that's the first leg of EMS. And then it continues for our responders on the street. We also have our law enforcement that helps us, as well as, we have hospital staff here today because that's where we take our patients. And we truly appreciate everything that the whole, they do as a whole. So, my name is Heather Howes, and I'm the EMS Coordinator for Calver County. One other thing that I would like to say is, we have one of our responders who is here today, and she is here today because her fellow responder saved her life. She was in cardiac arrest and the age of, Faith, could you come on up? Sorry. This is Faith Paris, and she used our services, but she is also a volunteer with Prince Frederick Rescue Squad.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. I wanted to honestly give out a thank you to everybody. One, for inspiring me to even do this job. Two, to keep me alive to do this job. And three, teach me along the way. I feel like education is important, and they definitely teach me and never let me fall behind, no matter who I'm with or where I'm at. And I want to thank you guys today for allowing me to be here for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up here. We're going to take a picture.
Please, everyone in the room, just form a line, introduce yourselves, and please come up.
Morning.
Good morning.
It looks like we have everybody represented here. Looks good.
I'm Daniel Firth, Chief of the Calver County Rescue Dive Team, Company 12.
Chad Langford, Charge Nurse, Calvert Health.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Ryan Cleckley, Lieutenant with Career EMS.
Hello, I'm Kalen Case, EMS Captain at Solomon's.
How you doing?
Good morning, I'm Abby Webb. I'm an EMS Sergeant at North Beach.
Andrew LaVanway, EMS Sergeant at North Beach.
Ryan Wilson, Rescue Lieutenant, Huntington.
Don Ensco, the Chief Engineer of the Prince Frederick Rescue Squad.
Megan Hill, Emergency Communications.
Lacey Ditten, Emergency Communication.
Richard Sewell, I'm the only EMS officer at Prince Frederick Fire.
Eddie Catterton, Deputy Chief, Dunkirk Fire Department.
Stephen Bailey, QA/QA Officer, Company 7.
Adam Weiss, Deputy Chief, Calvert Department of Life Support.
And Crystal Dowd, Acting Director of Public Safety. I just wanted to express my thanks for everyone here and just say how much of an honor it is to support such a compassionate group of people.
Thank you, Crystal.
Commissioners, thank you for honoring our EMS. We appreciate them every day, what they do for our citizens and what they do for us at the Sheriff's Office and the Maryland State Police barracks. Thank you.
All right. Want to introduce yourself? You're part of this.
Hi, Erin Ward, Recruitment and Retention Fire Rescue EMS.
All right, there's going to be more pictures to come. Thank you all for being here. I know a lot of you volunteers, and you took time out of your day to be here, and we appreciate everything you do. We really do. And like I said, we're here to recognize each one of you for what you do. Proclamation reads, "Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, the members of the EMS system serving Calver County are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the EMS system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, emergency telecommunicators, firefighters, police officers, emergency room nurses and physicians, dive team personnel, aviation command personnel, educators, administrators, and mobile crisis team members. The volunteers from the Calver County Fire Rescue EMS have provided services to the county for over 90 years. And whereas, the EMS team members, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Residents of Calver County benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals. And whereas, the physical and emotional sacrifice of responding to emergency calls, performing lifesaving skills under stress, providing patient care in intense situations does not end when the shift is over. EMS personnel provide community care that takes heart, time, and energy far beyond the scope of their everyday duties. And whereas, the EMS Week theme for 2023 is EMS, where emergency care begins. This theme is particularly meaningful as it reminds citizens that every day, our EMS first responders are faced with new challenges, yet they still rise above them all to respond, support, and care for the needs of our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of May 21st through 27, 2020, be known as Emergency Medical Services Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the appreciation of all Calver County citizens is hereby extended to all emergency medical services providers who go beyond the call of duty every day to create positive change in our community with a direct, long-lasting impact. Given under our hands and seal, the 16th day of May, 2023, signed by all five county Commissioners. Thank you all for going to this.
Smile.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Thank you. Yes, yes. Chad was back there really smiling. Have a good day.
So, the next item on the agenda is an award. We lost our part.
We have.
Mr. Harrell, you doing the award?
Sure. Thank you. All right, Mr. President, do we have somebody here from ERC? Good morning, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Beth Remmer, ERC member, and I'm here to introduce our Employee of the Month for May. Employee of the Month acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance in the following areas: effective public contact, respect for fellow employees, quality and/or quantity of work, contributions towards organizational morale, and actions that improve the county's public image. Anyone can nominate a coworker for this award, and please check out the ERC webpage for more information, now including virtual forms. Our May 2023 Employee of the Month is Colin Robbins, Enterprise Applications Manager for our Technology Services Department. Colin, would you please come forward to be recognized? Colin was nominated for his tireless efforts in configuring Workday, Calver County's new cloud-based human resources and financial management system. Colin worked incredibly hard over the last 10 months, leading the largest and most complex technology project that the county has ever undertaken. The project was challenging as it consolidated the use of multiple software programs into one operating system. He was a driving force behind the project's success. Colin was a true leader throughout this process, demonstrating excellent project management skills and an unflinching work ethic. He worked long hours and weekends without complaint. Colin has showed a level of dedication and commitment that is truly inspiring. Despite the challenges he has faced, Colin remained positive and focused on the project's goals. What was particularly impressive about Colin's work is that he managed to accomplish this difficult task while remaining incredibly and deservedly popular amongst his coworkers. He maintained fantastic working relationships and a great rapport with not only the project team, but with stakeholders across the county. Colin's ability to build relationships and work collaboratively was truly instrumental in the project's success. Overall, Colin is an outstanding employee who deserves to be recognized for his hard work and dedication. He was an invaluable asset through this project, and his contributions have made a real difference to the county. The ERC is very pleased to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing this remarkable coworker. Thank you, Stephen Pereira, for taking the time to submit this nomination. Thank you to the Commissioners for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee. And last but not least, thank you to Colin for all you do for Calvert's workforce. And I believe that there is someone else that would like to say a few words.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Pereira, Director of Technology Services. When I assumed the role of Director of Technology Services, the first thing I did was recognize the need for change within the Workday project management, and I asked Colin to step forward and take charge. You don't need me to tell you that that was an excellent decision. From the moment Colin took charge as Project Manager, it was clear that his technical prowess, combined with his exceptional project management skills and remarkable ability to connect with people, set him apart. It's a rare thing to find somebody who is technically very gifted, like Colin, and able to combine this with people and management skills. The impact of his leadership on the Workday project is beyond dispute, and the project's success is largely down to Colin's unwavering dedication and expertise. Colin's work has earned him the admiration of his colleagues, not only within our department, but within departments across the organization. This nomination came from me, but it could just have easily have come from the Director of Finance and Budget, HR, or CMR, or even the county administrator himself. Colin's intellect, diligence, and tireless commitment have propelled him to an exceptional level of performance. Furthermore, Colin's achievements have not only elevated the standard of excellence within our department, but also paved the way for the success of his colleagues. I look forward to seeing him maintain his level of excellence, in addition to empowering others and teaching others to do the same. It comes as no surprise to many people that Colin is the month of May's Employee of the Month, and I would like to personally thank him for representing TS in the way that he does and for the hard work that he put into delivering the project that he has.
Wait a minute.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget, and what Steve said is 100% true. Colin has been an irreplaceable asset for this county, especially when it's related to Workday, and he continues to keep me on the ball and following up with me. And I think he might even have a place in Finance and Budget soon, since he's had to learn the whole finance side of things. But I can't thank Colin enough, and I don't think there are enough words to say what a great job he has done and what a great asset he is to the county. And I thank him from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Colin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deana Davis, Human Resources Deputy Director. Thank you, Colin. This project has taken up all of our time for the last 10 months, and I personally was the Human Capital Management Lead for our office. So, I was managing one very small part of the Workday project. Colin was lassoing probably 20 or so functional leads, so he had his fingers in every piece of the Workday pie. I don't know how he did it. I could message him and say, "I think you need to join us in this meeting," and he would be there. So, you know, I'm grateful for him to reach out to see if everything is going okay. He's continuing to do that to this day, so grateful for his leadership. It was a success because of you, Colin. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, Colin, I had to laugh, if you heard me there, when they said to maintain popularity. It's been a little controversial, just to say the least. You know... Good? But you know, as with all change, there's always going to be some resistance, and this has gone, I think, better than what could have been expected. Not everybody's going to feel that sentiment, but you just said it. It's an entire new way of doing things that will definitely pay dividends in the end. So, thank you for your diligence on this. It's not over, but, you know...
I want you to roll up the... He has a Workday tattoo right here.
Standing right here. I've asked Colin to stand here because the highlights should be on him, but I needed to say these words because I don't believe that the, as the county employee population fluctuates up to 1,300, as many as 1,300 employees, they don't realize that really one person directly, a lot of indirect, but they also don't, was managing this project. Give all the credit in the world to the directors and to their staff, but without Colin being there constantly every day and Stephen behind him, we wouldn't be here. Most individuals don't know that we've been through two directors to get to where we are today, and we've been through two of this gentleman right here to get to where we are today. And most folks don't realize that there are counties way bigger than Calver County that tried this and failed. They shelved millions of dollars and quit. They don't realize that it takes three years if you give the right amount of time to execute this project, and we did it in roughly one year. They don't realize that you just gave an award to an employee, Jackie Vaughn, who's been here 40 years last Friday. So, you have 40 years of, "Well, I've been used to doing it this way." They don't like Workday because it's new. Many of them do like Workday because they're young enough, I think, to realize that it's a progress forward. But without Colin, I can absolutely say that we would have probably failed. That's not because of the director. It's because of the importance of the individual standing there every day managing the project. That's why you had so many people come up here at a high level saying that. So, he's not, and he will tell you, he's not the only person that accomplished this. He had a team within TS. He had a team within every department. And he'll say that we're here because of that combined effort, and that's a true statement. But they would not have been successful without Colin doing what Colin did for us, so thank you.
I think the county administrators are right. People just watching today on this on TV, you know, hear us talk about Workday, they don't truly understand what an undertaking it was. We changed our entire operational process, and that's not easy. There were issues, which we figured there would be, and there are still some issues that we're working through. But as the county administrator said, there are counties that spent, I don't know, $10 or $12 million, and after a year or two, walked away. And we've been able to implement this now since March, and we're not going to walk away. You know, we're going to figure out whatever hurdles we have left, and thanks to Colin, you know, it's been smooth enough that those hurdles weren't too large for us to overcome. So, we really do appreciate what you did for us, Colin.
No, thank you all. I'm grateful for the award, and Mark already said it, knew where I was going with this. You know, the project team, I can't thank them enough. The dedication and the amount of time that they put into the project was crazy, but they did it, and they have learned, learned a ton of stuff. So, as you said, you know, we know we have issues, but we'll continue to work through it, and I have no qualms that we won't figure out the solution.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, Commissioner Allen wants me to make sure I tell you, we didn't spend $10 or $12 million, but others did.
It's like 40, right? 50?
So, that brings us to appointments. Deputy Administrator Vasallo.
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Vasallo, Deputy Administrator. You have two appointments this morning. The first one is for the Calver County Commission for Women. The staff is requesting that the Board appoint Kristi Jones to the Calver County Commission for Women. Following that appointment, you'll have three vacancies.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to second that we appoint Kristi Jones to the Calver County Commission for Women. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next.
Your second appointment is for the Commission on Aging, and staff is requesting that the Board appoint Kristi Jones to the Commission on Aging, excuse me. Five vacancies will remain following this appointment.
Move to approve?
Second.
Does Kristi Jones know that we're appointing her to everything today? Motion to second that we appoint Kristi Jones to the Commission on Aging. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kristi. Motion carries. Thank you, Kristi. That brings us to consent, and there are three items under consent today. Item one, Department of Planning and Zoning, fluoroclorinated bio... Jesus. PCB.
Say that fast three times. Yeah, PCB.
For water quality monitoring and mitigation, Department of Planning and Zoning released from recording of agricultural preservation district glasscock property. Department of Public Safety, FY 2023, Port Security Grant Program, 25% Cost Match Commitment Letter. Are there any objections to those items under consent?
None.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. So I am going to make a little comment. Under item two, under consent, is the glasscock property is being removed out of the ag preservation district. For those of you out there listening, may not understand the impact that that has. Any of you that travel to Solomon's and cross the bridge, that very beautiful farm on your left as you cross the bridge is the glasscock property that's been in ag preservation, although they never sold an easement, they are taking that out of ag preservation. So that means the future of that property may not maintain the look that it has today. And I guess we want to thank the Glasscock family for maintaining that as long as they have, and we wish that they would continue to do that, but just thought it was important that people know what that item means to your view of Solomon's when you cross that bridge, and that there's pictures of that farm and that bridge and the Duck River everywhere.
Across the country. It's my favorite piece of property in this county by far. Grew up looking at it, grew up being around it. I guess I understand.
Yep.
I guess, so...
It's a sad action that we've taken today.
Yes, so I...
It's been in preservation since 1983.
Right, but until you sell your easement, you can always come out, and they've never sold their easement, so they are exercising their right to get out of the preservation program, so it's very unfortunate, but as we say, we understand.
Yeah.
Sorry. That brings us to new business. We have one item under new business, Department of Parks and Recreation Golf Course Carts Budget Adjustment. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Nizal, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good morning.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the memo. Background: Chesapeake Hills Golf Course was obtained by Calvert County Government in 2008 and has a long history of leasing golf carts to provide to its patrons. Over the years, the course has found this to be a convenient and cost-effective way to provide customers with easy access to transportation while on the course. However, after a recent competitive bid process, it was determined that purchasing the carts outright would be a better value in the long run. Discussion: While the golf course is currently budgeted to lease the carts, it plans to utilize that funding to pay back an unsecured promissory note with the county. This move will not only help the county save money in the long run, but also provide greater financial stability for operations going forward. A budget adjustment of this amount should be accounted for in the fiscal year 2023 budget. Fiscal impact: If approved, amends the adopted budget for fiscal year 2023 to appropriate and allocate $141,056 for the purchase of golf carts at Chesapeake Hills Golf Course through a loan from the General Fund of $129,150, and by moving $11,906 from Cost Center Golf Course Administration Spend Category Equipment Leasing to fund $141,056 to Cost Center Golf Course Administration Spend Category Vehicles, Cars, Vans, SUVs. The loan will be repaid annually through an unsecured promissory note from Cost Center Golf Course Administration Spend Category Equipment Leasing beginning in fiscal year 2024. The unsecured promissory note will be promptly signed upon approval of the budget adjustment by myself, Shannon Nizal, Director of Parks and Recreation. Conclusion, recommendation: Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve and adopt the resolution approving Budget Adjustment 000044, and approve the loan upon signature and delivery of the signed note. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Jane, how many golf carts will this take us up to?
So, this will, it will, our total amount of carts will stay the same. What we are planning to do is, this is a purchase of 25 regular carts, but we are trading in 25 regular carts. This also includes the purchase of a beverage cart, two utility vehicles, and an ADA golf cart, ADA accessible cart.
But we'll have plenty to do, we need to do.
Yes, this is, the carts that will be traded in are 2012s, so it is replacing those 2012s that are...
Oh, it's nothing.
Loved, they've been loved.
Yeah, it was nothing, yeah. Okay.
So, and generally when you lease equipment, there's the maintenance you're not responsible for, but in this, your plan, you're going to do a lease contract with, for service?
Yes, so this will also include, we will still have in our budget the dollar amount for our maintenance for a five-year period.
And you still believe long-term that's going to be more cost-effective than your current arrangement?
Yes, it will be more, more cost-effective, and the payoff will be quicker, so it will, it should save us a few, few tens of thousands.
Good, good.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve and adopt the resolution approving BA-00044, and approve the loan upon the signature and delivery of the signed note.
Second.
Note.
A motion, a second, that we approve and adopt the resolution approving BA-00044, and approve the loan upon signature and delivery of the signed note. Any discussion on that motion?
I have none.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I've signed the note, and I'm going to hand it over to the County Attorney. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
That brings us to public comment. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Word of County Commissioners, adopted a resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy of that is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked us to remind speakers at public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists are required to register in advance. The floor has been open for public comment from persons in the meeting room who may begin making their way to the microphone than those joining virtually. All speakers must identify themselves, and whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group. For those attending virtually, you may press star nine or use the raise your hand function. Virtual speakers will be identified by the last four digits of their phone number or screen name, and unmuted one at a time. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to provide public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mike Scarborough. I'm the owner of Running Hair Vineyard. I made a decision this morning that I've come to the Board and address, speak directly about the issue with regards to Running Hair Vineyard, about our opening, our running, and, open and running, no pun intended, by the way. This process began about two and a half years ago when we were cited for violations specifically for construction without permits. For that, we're absolutely guilty, and we've made that fully knowledgeable over these last two and a half years. I think Mark Willis probably got tired of listening to me and our conversations, acknowledged that, I think, on virtually every conversation that we had. Ultimately, this comes down to an issue. Has Running Hair Vineyard done what it's been asked to do? I saw on Commissioner Grasso's Facebook page a timeline that was put together by the county government of what Running Hair Vineyard had done over the last two and a half years. By and large, I believe that that timeline is pretty darn accurate, I do. What does not address, however, is the work that's needed to be done with state agencies, such as the Health Department, Maryland Department of the Environment, Fire Marshals, et cetera. Some of this work can be done sequentially, some of this work can't be and has to be done concurrently. It's been stated many times that Running Hair Vineyard simply did nothing, and nothing would be further from the truth. Some work simply had to stop until we got guidance from the Health Department on what we could or could not do, what was acceptable and not acceptable. Oftentimes, what we got from the Health Department was little or no guidance, and we were essentially told to have our engineers and architects design something, and they were going to tell us if it worked or didn't work. Once we finally got answers, we would then come back to the county, begin doing what we were supposed to do. Adding to this, they would send it back then to COA, to the architects, engineers, and let them do what worked, they needed to do. All these processes took a considerable amount of time, as you are well aware. If I were sitting on this board, I'd probably come away with the same conclusions that Running Hair Vineyard had simply dug in their heels and at times didn't do what they'd been asked to do. That simply is inaccurate.
Please wrap up your comments.
We've had to deal with county agencies, state agencies, engineering firms, architectural firms to coordinate this whole process. Just because the county did not see us doing anything certainly does not mean that we weren't actively trying to rectify this situation. We all look poorly, Running Hair Vineyard, Board, County, et cetera, but where the problem really lies, I think, is in communications. It's a shame that nobody picked up the phone and simply asked a basic question, you know, "What the hell's going on down there, and what does it take to become compliant?" If somebody had just asked this, it would have been quite easy. It's a three-minute conversation. Those of you know...
Three minutes into your two minutes, so if you would please wrap up your, wrap up your comments.
I think I have five minutes.
No, as an individual, you're allocated two minutes.
I'm an owner of the business.
That's not a designated representative of a group.
Those of you who know me know incredibly anal I am about everything. I want my business to be perfect, I want the venue to be perfect, and I want the client experience to be perfect. What's tragic is we're sitting here on the two-yard line. All the work that we've been asked to do has been long done, long ago. We're simply waiting to be open. I'll conclude those, my remarks. Thanks.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to leave your written comments, they will be made part of the minutes. If you'd like to leave your written comments, they will be being part of the minutes for the meeting?
I can do that.
Okay.
There's part of this I...
Is there anyone else here to speak?
Good to see you again. How is everybody?
Good.
Lynn Robinson, speaking as an individual. Wanted to echo the points and add a couple others. One, I wanted to apologize for the tone of last week. I don't think that helps anybody, and I'd like this to be friendly, so again, I'm sorry if things were a little bit contentious. Wanted to reiterate a couple of the comments, that, looking at the timeline, thank you, I think, I too, think it seems accurate. There is a little bit of reading in between not what has been, what is missing from that timeline, things that have been done that are not reported, and it's too much to go through here, but I would be happy to email some additional documentation at a later date. Want to highlight that, I think we've established before, there's not a safety issue here, that we don't want a business to fail, yet the outlay of the added issues, architectural plans, engineering plans, restrooms, is hundreds of thousands of dollars while the vineyard is closed and has a ridiculously choked revenue stream without being open day in and day out. And also, following up, we are not asking for any special favors. We would hope you would treat any business exactly as we are requesting, and we are not asking for public events. Those were pulled by the Agricultural Preservation Board years ago, just so that they be open on weekends so that they can have a little bit of revenue to help with these compliance issues that both the state and the county and a lot of different agencies are putting on them. So just, yeah, just the notion that it's not sustainable to put hundreds of thousands of dollars on a business and then close them too. So, thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Yes, my name is Carolyn Wilson. I'm speaking as an individual. I too would like to apologize for the tone last week. I think we got a little upset, or, you know, anyway, we were a little frustrated because I think we felt like some, you were saying Running Hair hadn't done anything, or hadn't been doing anything, or we were, you know, inferring that they hadn't done anything, and hopefully Mike was able to explain as well that they really have been trying to do things, it's just I think there's a communication breakdown. So I would just say that, you know, everything's been done, there are some final approvals to be made. I think that, you know, there have been some communication breakdowns. You guys aren't necessarily seeing everything that's going on, like he said, you know, with other agencies. There doesn't appear to be a safety issue to allowing them to open. I also concur with Lynn. I don't think anybody expects you to look the other way, but that we would hope that you would treat any business in the county this way, that if they are making an effort to be compliant, that you can allow them at least to stay open. So my request would just to allow them to, allow them to open the vineyard and the beer garden while they're doing the final approvals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Ilana Vinabnorn, speaking as an individual. Just like to say here, learning about this topic as an individual, as, you know, as someone who's new to the county, and would ask, as every speaker here is, let's work together, let's get this business open, because we need businesses open in the county and in this time to keep people employed. So I would appreciate that, and again, I do apologize as well for last week, that was not our intention, and not asking anyone to break any integrity, but just to work together, let the business open, and let's work together to get this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? And, Mr. President, there's no one online.
Thank you. So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everybody knows, we had Business Appreciation Week, and I want to just reiterate, it was nice to go out to different businesses and learn about them, see their staff, and what they're doing for the community. Also, on Friday, I attended the Employee Service Awards Ceremony for the county. I just want to thank all employees of Calvert County and what they do for the citizens of Calvert County. Also, attended a fundraiser for Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department over the weekend, was well attended, and keeping your prayers, if you may, the Osborne family, the Swan family, and the Seda family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Also, last Tuesday, once we wrapped up our meeting here, we each visited three businesses, and we wrapped up at the Women's Wellness Clinic and the Farmers Market at the hospital. It was very well put together. It was nice hearing what a lot of businesses had to say, what they're doing with the grant money that they received through the county and state. Thursday, we followed it up again. I went to the tavern in St. Leonard. They've been, I think, operating as a tavern since, for about 40 years, but the actual business has been in the same location under a different name since 1938. It's a long time for anybody to be in business. On Friday, also, attended DRC event. We gave a lot of service awards to a lot of recipients, and as Commissioner or Director Willis mentioned earlier, Jackie Vaughn got 40 years service award to the county. That's a long time. She's, she retired, we honored her retirement. I was even still, she was very worthy of receiving that award. She did a lot for the county over the years. Also went to Morgan Russell. They've been in business for 63 years in the county. That's also a long time for somebody to be in business. I remember as a kid going up there when Morgan owned it, and Greg was a young man then. He still is fairly young, but it was, it was nice, again, nice, nice, nice going around at his business. On Friday night, we attended the hospice event. It was, ended up being held at the Hall at Huntingtown. It was very well attended. It looked like their fundraising efforts, it looked like they did very well. I'm happy for hospice that everything worked out. Sunday, Mother's Day, I actually went to Tuckahoe. They had a rodeo that was put on by Triple Creek Winery. It was a lot of families there, very well attended. It was a great event, it really was, so it's all right.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Grasso?
Well, I had to leave early last week before public comments, so I want to comment about a few things that I went to previous to that. One thing I really want to talk about is Become One. That was held May 3 at CSM, and what that was, 42 students from four high schools in the county had their photos taken, and they also, there was a little, and I don't know what you call it, Kevin, you can probably tell me, that thing that's black and white, and you put your phone on.
QR code.
QR code. Buddy, I'm impressed.
He knows what type of technology, you know that.
And you could, you could read how they... I'd really like to see it grow, because I think it's a good, it's a good avenue for other kids who may be developing some mental health issues, some stress, to know that there are students within the school system who have coping mechanisms that they could maybe turn to. So that, that was really great. And then, of course, the national signing at CTA. CTA is such a wonderful, wonderful treasure to our county. Not only do we have young people going into the trades, but into the military, into medical practices within Calvert County, hairdressers, so on and so forth. These kids, they're going to graduate, and they're, they're going into their future, which is a bright future. And I did an inspirational walk on the sixth that was for Special Olympics. My, my, two of my grandchildren and one daughter-in-law, one son were there as well, and the farmer's markets are open. I hope everybody is going to those, because they, they have a lot to offer. I really filled up on Too Many Tomatoes that I'm eating like crazy. Okay, five-eleven. These, the, what I went to, because I wasn't here with you all that past Tuesday, Met Art Gallery celebrating fifty years of business, Calvert School of Dance, forty-five years, Jennifer's Gymnastics, twenty-five years. I also attended the Service Awards Day for employees and the hospice event as well, which was really a fun time. And then on Saturday, I went to the Cash Bash at Dunkirk Volunteer Fire Department. I didn't win, win anything as I left, and I've not gone online to see if I did win anything. And then Chesapeake Garden Club had their plant sale at Fairview Library. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Well, I just want to wish hopefully every, everybody had a good Mother's Day this past weekend, and thank all the businesses that had us come by Tuesday. It's a good opportunity to hear from them, any problems they're seeing or anything that's going well. So it's a nice opportunity, I want to thank them. And this time of year is playoff baseball in, in the schools, so I watched a lot of county baseball, and hopefully we will get a representative to play for the state championship this year. So that's all I have. Mr. President?
Thank you. So before I forget, I want to congratulate the Calvert High School girls softball team for winning smack championships last week. We need to get them in, Katie. As we've talked many times before, for such a small county, we, we have some really outstanding athletes in high school sporting activities. We have them in here a lot, and it's very refreshing to see that the talent that we have in our youth here in Calvert County.
I believe Calvert Lacrosse, didn't Calvert Lacrosse win something against Huntington last night? I think so.
They did, and I think they're going on to state championship or something, yes. They have a good team.
It's good. Katie will find that out, too. So, and I too visited the three businesses last Tuesday afternoon, and then I went to one on Thursday down in Solomons. And as Commissioner Allen said, we did celebrate Morgan Russell's sixty-three years in business here in Calvert County, and I've always heard the stories of how Morgan started out, and it's great to see a family business can exist that long. And the overwhelming theme that we heard at all the businesses we visited was, they all need help. They can't find help. It's amazing that they're struggling the way they are to find help. They have business. I had one business tell me they could quadruple their business if they could find employees, and they can't find employees. It's just boggles my mind. But, so, anything we can do out there to help our businesses get employees, we need to do. You know, we've talked about the Career Center, what a great service that it is to our kids provides. As Commissioner Grasso said, I too attended that ceremony, see those kids have already got jobs lined up the day they graduate, they can go to work, don't have to go to college, won't have any debt to carry on. It's wonderful. So we, we need to make sure we promote that as much as we can. Over the weekend, I didn't do any county business. I did go to visit my daughter in South Carolina, where her son got confirmed in the church, which is a big milestone for him, and made his grandmother very proud. But, last thing, and earlier, we did a proclamation for EMS Week. As I said, at that time, we have a wonderful volunteer EMS service in our county. People pick up the phone in their worst times, and somebody shows up and takes good care of them, and people don't even realize that a lot of the times it's volunteers, people that have given up their time, spend hundreds of hours in training, giving up their family time for meetings and drills just to serve you. Total strangers that are in their worst times, they show up. And so we want to take every opportunity we can, we did thank them and show our appreciation, and hope that you do the same thing. Whenever you have to interact with one of those individuals, that you thank them for taking out of their time. Volunteerism is not what it used to be, and so we're very fortunate to have the volunteers that we do have today. And lastly, tonight, we're going to have our final budget hearing for public, it's at seven o'clock right here. You can phone in, zoom in. If you go to the county website, you can get information on how you can call or zoom in. And this will be the final public hearing on the budget for this cycle, and we will vote on June sixth to finalize the budget. There's still, as I have said before in my five years, this is the first budget that we are still in a little bit of flux, because in some outstanding circumstances beyond our control, but we will have that finalized by June the sixth. And I want to thank, publicly take this opportunity to thank the Superintendent, Council, and Scott Johnson for the many, many, many meetings we've had together trying to come to some resolution for the budget request for the Board of Education. As you all that follow us know, this year, the superintendent asked for twenty-four million dollars, which was historic, and having to work through that, I think last year, the request was for nine million, and to have to deal with a request of that size and magnitude is significant. While trying to make sure we meet the needs of the school system, it's also making sure that we're being physically responsible with your tax dollars. So I want to thank the superintendent again for the many, many meetings we've gone through. I think we've come to some resolution on this budget and should meet most of his needs. I believe that's all I have. Commissioner Hart, or does someone have a motion for me to go into executive session?
Yes, sir. My move, we recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section three dash three oh five B eight, to consult with staff regarding pending or potential litigation.
Second. Have a motion on second that we move into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.